Okay, let's begin our meeting, let's stand for the pledge and moments of.
We are citizens of the United States of America in a secret republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beginning our public hearing, or I'm sorry, public meeting on March 7th to 2024. It's have a roll call, seven.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Ritter?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Bevart?
Here.
Mayor Liston?
Here. Need a motion to approve approval minutes from February 22nd, 2024. Motion by Mr. Ritter, second?
Second.
Second by, is that you Brian?
Yeah.
By Mr. Cameron, call the vote.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevart?
Yes.
Mayor Liston?
Yes. Under E, we're gonna have the swearing in of our new casual firefighter, Mr. Anthony M. Choffey Jr.'s. Please come to the podium, Mr. Choffey. Yes. If you stand to the left, if I, um, if I asked Stephanie if I could do this this evening, and the reason was is because, um, when I was a principal, this young man was in my class, in my, in my school, and, um, he was a very, very bright, very bright guy, maybe a little bit too bright. And, um, then I was the baseball coach at Newcastle High School for many years, and I had the honor of coaching him. I always thought I knew a lot of baseball, but I didn't know as much as him. So he told me every single day, I could tell, he would tell me how to manage the team, until finally I had to tell, look, I'm the manager, you're the player, shut up and do what I said. So I'm saying this because you don't know anything about being a fireman, listen to what they tell you. You don't know more than Mr. Kobe, okay, so don't tell him how to put out a fire. Your team after me, would you put your hand on the fire? I, Anthony M. Choffey Jr., do solemnly swear.
I, Anthony M. Choffey, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States. And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office as a casual firefighter.
Of my office as a casual firefighter.
An employee of the city of Newcastle Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
An employee of the city of Newcastle Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Hey, moving on. Okay, we need a, uh, adoption of agenda, acknowledgement of prepared agenda, and consideration requests to be heard, and amendments to agenda. I have three requests to be heard. So those three are Alonzo Waters, Ted Wright, and Timothy Buck. Motion to accept public comment?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers, call the, call the vote.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bevart?
Yes, adoption of final agenda, motion to adopt the final agenda.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers, call the vote.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevart?
Yes. Yes. Uh, the public comments, please come up to the podium, state your name, and you'll have five minutes. We'll go with Mr. Timothy Buck first.
Is the mic on?
It is on. The chat is short, chat is short. There you go.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Timothy Buck, 1002 Service Street, I am a taxpayer in the city of Newcastle. I spoke on Monday night on the conditional use request for Gussie M., Gussie M. Walker, for the Community Outreach Program. I'm just here again asking you to make the right decision by approving this. Uh, this group does an amazing amount of items for these underprivileged childrens. And by doing this conditional use request, it will help them expand everything they need to do. So I'm hoping you'd make the right decision, approve it, and that's all I got for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Uh, Mr. Alonzo Waters?
Good evening, I am here this evening to represent the Gussie Mae Walker House, and, um, I just would love that tonight you guys would approve this. Uh, Gussie Mae Walker has been in this community for seventeen years now, and we have helped underprivileged children. Uh, primarily, the children are from the South Side area, but we have had children from almost all of the boroughs and all around the city that come and have been a part of this. And so, uh, just to give you a little more information, this is a, uh, after-school program. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and an after-school program where we help, uh, the children learn, we feed the children, we have tutors that come in to help also from Westminster College. Um, we also do things in the summertime, our program is extended in the summertime where the children come during the, uh, morning, and then we feed them, we take them on trips, and so we are very invested into these children and believe that a lot of times if we weren't there, they might not get a meal to eat if we weren't there, there wouldn't be anyone to push them to excel in their education. And so we believe that we are a vital part of these children's lives, and we don't take this for granted, and so we pray that this will be an opportunity for us to be able to expand and to grow, and to be able to reach more children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, thank you for your involvement. Uh, Mr. Ted Wright?
Morning, gentlemen. My name is, uh, Theodore Wright. I'm here on behalf of, I'm just a concerned citizen about the United Way, Cascade Swimming Pool, uh, the renovation of it. I, I wanna thank you for everything that you have done, but it's, it's been ten years, and what we have here is, they have some funding, and I know today I found out that a lot of things have been approved, but, uh, it's still dragging on ten years. These kids, I grew up in Cascade, I mean, I remember the pool, I mean, the pool, the cascade, the, the rides. We learned how to play, getting along with each other. You're not gonna learn how to do that looking at a computer screen. These kids aren't even learning how to talk without sending a text. So we need more things that are socially, uh, appropriate for the kids today, to get them away from this individual thing, as, as, you know, bullying and stuff like that. Meet a bully. I mean, I grew up in a time, I'm not saying that I condone fighting or anything, but I, I grew up in a time when a lot of the things were handled differently, and it was solved. Now it can linger on, it can linger on, but if we get to socializing again, and if we get back to what we came really or doing in our communities, these are the kids that might someday be helping you to your car, helping you with groceries, but we gotta get them to teach them to express that. It's okay to have a difference of opinion, but let's have a, uh, let's go swimming together, or let's, you know, let's play baseball, or let's take it to the football field. I just, again, I appreciate your time and all, and thank you for everything you're doing, but, uh, I'll be back, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Moving on. Under administrative comments, Chris, you have it.
So to begin the, uh, first meeting of each month, you know, part of the state administrator's contract is part of our duty to provide just an overview of the, of the previous month, and our monthly report, which I'll provide to our council members. Just wanted to touch on something that I often take any questions that you all may have. Uh, some of this stuff internally from departments, from the department, from the department heads and the administration is obviously working towards the, uh, set priorities for each department. I've tasked each department head with examining their department individually, working with their own staff and their own supervising meetings to come up with different priorities that are, are well-known, you know, within the administration and council. It's just to ensure strategically that we have a path for, and there's a lot of things happen throughout the year that we're not taking off track without implementing these, uh, these key points. One way we're gonna utilize and, uh, to get this message out and work with council is to do it strategically in our, um, uh, council committee meetings. So as you all plan and schedule those meetings, we'll be presenting those and also, uh, offering those items up for discussion, uh, for, uh, along with the agendas that, that are set. And additionally, I know we were actually working on one now, uh, some different policies, points that are both internally affecting the city and externally affecting, you know, development and opportunities, one, for instance, our, like, building permits. And just really trying to look on a strategic level how that, how these, uh, policies are affecting us when, you know, for the city to move forward. So we're really focused on, obviously, obviously making some internal policy suggestions, uh, hoping for action, you know, down the road, as we examine more with the solicitors and whatnot. So we'll be presenting those things to council. In addition to, uh, it always included in, in mine, it's just kind of a bullet point, and then my administrative report is always gonna be a bullet point area of what, uh, what I've worked on, you know, personally, in addition to doing my supervisory role with each department head. And you can see, you know, some of the key initiatives just include, you know, a variety of different things that have already come public in front of these meetings, uh, but, you know, obviously, you don't just get, you know, a topic that's brought up or a public statement that's brought up, there's a lot of backend work that is included in those from, whether it's a grant, a pothole, um, any type of, uh, agreement or initiative the council is seeking, such as moving, relocating the city. You know, certain things just don't die on the table, we continue to work, uh, you know, collectively with all department heads and, and the solicitors to continue with those things forward. So, um, some of the major ones that, uh, developments that have happened over the last couple months, uh, I would say FEMA go with these large grants that we've gotten, is FEMA go. The two COF grants that we've received are all moving forward great, you know. Um, FEMA go, we did have a little bit of issue with the IT and submitting our first, uh, payment request, but that's been resolved up to this point. Um, and I'm working with Chief Kobe in the finance office on getting that information submitted. We are administering that grant internally, so my office is administering that grant. The COF grants are moving forward, I sent out an email or a text today showing you all that the de-escalation software, which was, I believe was a hundred, $250,000, has been installed. This is, that's a huge opportunity for the Newcastle Police Department and training. I was, uh, I got to participate in the demo today, and I, I have to say I didn't do a good job at it. I got shot twice, and I, I, I thought I de-escalated the situation, but I didn't. I'm not real observant when it comes to those type of situations, and the gentleman in the simulator had a gun sitting on the chair next to him, so I got shot. I did break, take him down, so he obviously didn't shoot to kill. Uh, but that's a great, uh, it's a great system, and I, some of the, you guys will all see if you get a chance to go down there and check, and check it out, but coming out of, uh, you know, nationwide, maybe even globally, some of the issues that were happening with police departments, we've been, we're not exempt from that, we've had some more issues. Those are, um, they are real-life examples of what's gonna happen out there on the streets. So I'm excited for the training that the officers are gonna get, the expert, the knowledge that they're gonna receive from that, and in our incorporation of other departments throughout our county to really make this, you know, regionalized opportunity for, uh, the city and the counties. One other one, this is on the agenda today, the Enterprise Park lighting. Again, that is a city project that's been underway for some time. We originally submitted that grant in partnership with, uh, with Fort Lawrence. That grant we submitted for about, uh, $2.3 million, only got a million dollars out of it. As you can see, going on the East Washington Corridor, there's a lot of opportunities, or a lot of construction has already been completed. There's two things that are gonna have to be addressed this year, that I'm asking council for your support on. Um, one being the lights and, uh, paying for the materials, we've just received them. After several months, we received them, uh, last month, maybe at the, more towards the end of February, but we've just received them, and that invoice is still outstanding. Uh, essentially, what we're, what's, the grant still has some funds, $41,000, um, and also $3,500, so ninety-three, a hundred and ninety thousand. We're looking at using the, um, local fuels funds to support that and get these lights up so we can fin, finish that project. In addition to that, it's also produce street, which I'm asking for requests in this 2024 budget, paving budget, to also look at helping pay, finish that, uh, paving project. We just talked to the owners of the Union Station Distillery, they're excited about this. They know that there's timeline issues when it comes to paving and getting everything done. It's hard to coordinate, but you have the state, you got the city contracts, you got utility companies, all doing work in this, in the central area, but we don't wanna stall any business any longer. Um, we wanna be able to support them and get them open, and also, that's, it's a huge attraction when people come in to see, you know, nice paved streets, beautiful lighting. Um, and I believe those, those folks down there, along with Don Service, are gonna truly invest in that area to continue to make it grow. Uh, community initiatives is another area that I've been tasked with and being involved in, trying to do my best to keep up with them, because, you know, you know, as, especially as the spring and summer months come, there's gonna be a lot more, but, um, I know, uh, 2024 concert city is a big one, I've been working with Yolanda Jensen, who has volunteered to take over that. I've worked, been working with and communication with, um, Michelle, or Melissa Barnes and Dave Copper to work on providing, uh, fundraising for that. Obviously, from the city's standpoint, we're really just, obviously, this, this is like one of our sponsor programs, we support this, we all go down there, I know I campaigned there, you all campaigned there, but a lot of people, this draws probably, I think at a high point, it was about seven, eight hundred people down, down, um, at one event, so we wanna continue to see this go, so I offer, you know, myself, particularly Fire and Department, uh, Public Works, to really just take part in these conversations and work with that group. America PA 250 attended that event, Fort Lawrence, the Syncubator, uh, and just continue these conversations with, uh, groups that are, you know, we don't necessarily have, uh, a lead in it, but they're looking at, uh, bringing some types of projects, uh, uh, some type of project to the cities of Castle. Outside of that, we go onto the each department, you can see it was a busy month for us. Each department gives their metrics and numbers in terms of what their volume was, in terms of cars. At the quarterly meetings, they, they compile a lot of information and share that and, and offer, you know, answers to any question the council may have. So, um, that's all I have for you, if there's any other, any questions or any desired changes as I mentioned, you know, when I send it out, please let me know, but willing to answer any questions.
Question?
Yeah.
Just on the lights, remind me what we did last year? So we moved money last year because the water industry was just there.
Yeah.
So what, that was just for the boost?
That was a change order for the, to install the, the wiring.
Right.
And the current bid with the, um, with, uh, Young Blood, we got the paving contract.
Okay.
So we had to take a street off of last year, which was a other street, and do a change order to get those installed.
That's just for that, and this is the actual?
This is the actual material, and at the time of that change order, there was, we didn't have any material. Uh, and there was a misunderstanding from the four, within Fort Lawrence RER and administration, one of those funds, so, um, again, we do have the rollover from last year of local fuels, they can fund this, we are anticipating the rollover for 2024, and the rollover essentially comes from, you know, we are required to sixty percent for, uh, assault purchases, and if you don't have that, then we're able to roll that over to the next year to use it for other reasons.
Anything else?
It's, um, it really is amazing during the day how much comes out of this, there's quite a bit, it just doesn't stop, and, and if you ever wanna spend a day to see this, it, it is just continuous, and that's not even including people who come in and just want answers over things. Uh, and, you know, or they have a, a request. And, and really, I think all of us, we appreciate that more when people come in and ask us what's going on, rather than just being criticized on social media, which just spreads negativity throughout the community. So we appreciate all these people who come in every day, to come and see us and ask those questions, the perfect questions, that we, most, most of the time, we can give them answers to.
If we are best to show lay, then give, give the answers what we can. I know we've had tons of meetings doing that, so we'll continue moving forward and, uh, just continue to work as an administration to keep the city moving and provide opportunities for residents.
Anything else you can?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Berg. And the receipt of written communications, there are none, fiscal contraction. We have no authorization, request authorization, no receipt of bids, no acceptance of bids. Regular reports, uh, special, uh, city council regular reports, special reports, anything you report? Councilman? Huh? Okay, I, I have one, I just wanted to let council know that, um, once a night, we had our meeting for the, um, Lawrence County Heritage Celebration. Um, it's a hundred seventy-five years of diversity, that's going to be held on August 31st, September 1st, at Cascade Park. We had twenty people, approximately twenty people show up and are now serving on different committees, because the logistics of this is really, uh, huge. It's going to be for two days, we're going to really celebrate the entire ethnic gamut of Lawrence County. Uh, we organized, um, we're beginning to organize the bands, the food, the events. Our chairperson is Ashley LaPierre, you guys know her, who organized the parade. Uh, so she's taking charge in, um, in getting this moving. Uh, Mr. Rivera was there, and the reason I share this with you is because any other, we will have more, e, um, meetings, committee meetings, you guys will be aware of them, we'd like you guys to attend as well, okay? Okay, moving on. Under new resolutions, uh, these next two, uh, council wants to know for the next two resolutions for repository properties, uh, you must state a reason why you're denying the bid, and the example obviously is dilapidated, unhappable, uninhabitable, back taxes, code violations, et cetera. Okay, motion to approve, Resolution 2024 dash oh four two, authorizing the individuals designated by the city charter to execute the bid acceptance form, accepting the bid made by Michael Henry and Tarlo Co. in amount of $650 for repository property located at 215 East Home Street, and having a parcel ID number of oh five dash oh one ninety-five hundred. Motion to approve? Motion? Mr. Ritter, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cameron, uh, call a roll, call a vote?
There's some discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, question?
Talking about this for, uh? Yeah, absolutely, uh, two questions that were passed by Councilman Cameron. The administration did follow up, there were some violations that, um, the property owner did have, and it's changed the, uh, location, so there was some mail-in issues, and we did not get forwarding. I believe they resolved, they did, I don't believe, I, I know they did resolve the two violations. However, the property is on the demo list, and what happens is when a property's in a repository property, the county reaches out to code, code, if, if it's a, if it's a property, if it's a residential property. So if there's a structure on the property, they reach out to code, and they ask if we want to demo it. That process had already gone, started, we submitted that, or Anthony Choffey submitted the application for that, uh, and it, we haven't received approval for it, but that's their, that's always our process, so there, that one is in the pipe, not from a city demo perspective, but from a county, a collaborative county demo, the application has already been submitted.
Call the vote for that.
Mr. Rogers?
No, um, it's on the demo list and.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
No, demo list dilapidated.
Mr. Cameron?
No demo list.
Mr. Bevart?
No demo list.
Mayor Liston?
No demo list dilapidated. Item two, Resolution 2024 dash oh four three, authorizing the individuals designated by the city charter to execute the bid acceptance form, accepting the bid made by Dominic Grant in amount of $500 for repository property located in North Liberty Street, and having a parcel ID number of oh seven dash oh six five six hundred. Questions?
This is just the vacant lottery.
vacant lot.
Further solicitors, I don't think we ever changed this, we talked about it, and I don't think we acted on it. So he didn't submit any paperwork.
Yeah, but I think.
Didn't honor ordinance, we can't, that's not a legit reason to deny it.
Correct.
We're supposed to go back and look at that because they should submit paperwork if we're submitting.
Yeah, I mean, the state statute change that municipalities can require appearance for the government bodies to approve or deny, but right now, we don't have requirement, but it's, it's not, it's not required.
Thank you. Call the vote.
We need a motion.
Oh, the motion, I'm sorry, motion.
Second.
So, and Mr. Rogers, seconds, call the vote.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevart?
Yes.
Mayor Liston?
Yes. Under Resolution 2024 dash oh four four, approving the appointment of Nicholas Mariano to the Newcastle Housing Code, ordered appeals for term to expire to September 31st, 2027?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter?
I need second.
Second by Mr. Cameron. Questions? He takes the place of Mr. Jesse Moss, who passed away. Hey, call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Under Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four five, approving the appointment of Councilman Edward Bogart to the Citywide Development Corporation Avenue Newcastle Board.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ritter, second by Mr. Rogers. We have any comment? I think I'll vote you on this one, huh?
No, thanks. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. No, thanks.
Okay, call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna? Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four six, authorizing the appropriate city officials to submit a section nine to two grant application through the Department of Environmental Protection to purchase blue recycling bin.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bogart. Call a vote. Any questions?
Go ahead. Go ahead. I thought we were looking at this as far as whether we should be submitting it as the city or Aiken. I thought there was a conversation. I don't recall the conversation.
I don't either. I would say though, if we can own them, so they can be ours on Aiken, so we can give them.
Yeah, we've done this grant patch where we purchased, we've been currently, Public Works has a list of over two hundred that are requesting. So this grant came available at webinar today on this grant. But yeah, we typically have been one prospect, but that would be contractual thing we can look at to see.
Yeah, I don't, our, from my recollection, our contract with Aiken allows the residents to put out recyclables and anything. So I don't think that they would, it would be violating the contract. Probably makes sense that we have a recycling anyhow, since they're not, they collect it, but there's, you know, like they have an option to deal with the regular refuse.
Yeah, just wouldn't, if paid collection, wouldn't the residents have to pay for the things, like they get for the garbage?
Well, the way our contract reads with Aiken is that for recycling, they have to collect it and whatever the resident puts it out. And so, you know, they can't require a resident to.
Purchase anything.
Right, yeah.
I may be looking at.
With the, at this current moment, I'm not sure what the prices are. Once I dig into the grant some more, get some quotes, I'll be able to provide that answer. I'm going for hopefully completion of the listing and have some on reserve. So I could only imagine the price hasn't gone up since the last time we did it, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of this.
And how will the residents get the bid for moving?
Public Works delivers it to them.
Okay, call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Under Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four six, authorizing the appropriate city officials to submit a section, oh, I read that, I'm sorry. Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four seven, authorizing the appropriate city officials to submit an application through the Lawrence County Application for Funding Systems for the South Mill Street Paving.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cameron. Questions? Any call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Under Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four eight, authorizing the administration to expend one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars to purchase twelve vehicle credomonts for the inner car sale funds for the Newcastle Police Department.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cameron. Questions? Call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four nine, authorizing the administration to expend six thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-one cents to purchase eight cargo racks cargo area organizer trays for the Newcastle Police Department patrol cars. Questions?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cameron. Call the vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yep.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh fifty, authorizing administration to expend twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents to hire FNA solutions for the Newcastle Police Department's door access system.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cameron. Questions? Chris, explain this a little bit.
So the first one is door access system. So we've had, traditionally, we've gone with Johnson Controls. Johnson Controls are their number. For them to come in and service our doors, the numbers were just a little too steep for us. So we found a provider that could service the doors and do additional stuff for a lot much lower.
It's cheaper.
It's cheaper. And then also, just we have a number of doors that need updated and fixed. So this is a part of their safety, our safety meetings with the department. And also, you'll see the next one is also the video camera system. In certain areas, the cameras are not functional.
Okay, call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five one, authorizing the administration to expend twenty-two thousand thirteen dollars and ninety-one cents to hire FNA solutions for the Newcastle Police Department's video surveillance system. Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Cameron, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. No questions? Call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five two, authorizing administration to expend forty-six thousand and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents to purchase a twenty twenty four Jeep Grand Cherokee for the city's DEA task officer.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cameron. Questions?
Property funds?
This is grant funds.
It's a grant fund.
Yes.
Okay, call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five three, authorizing the administration to expend two hundred two dollars and thirty-eight cents to Dante Luvici for the demonstration events at Cascade Park insecurity. Motion? Have a motion for this? Motion by Mr. Bogart, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosanna. Questions?
What is this for?
Yeah, Dante was out there, Dante Luvici, he's doing the demonstration for the events that we're going to be having at Cascade Park. So that was for internet, because we had to put the internet up there prior before it being in there in April and for some security, because he had a lot of people up there.
There is some internet in the dance hall now?
There, I believe it'll come in April.
The Newcastle Lottery submitted their grant, the one I informed you all, I believe earlier this year. That is due to be installed in certain areas of the park. And we just had a call with them last week and they won't have it all fully installed until April of this year, so.
So we had to install?
No, he did. He went and ordered it and did it.
Who did?
Dante Luvici. He talked to us, yes.
Then we're, so he did it, we're just paying.
It's a one-time charge for.
Isn't that something like our electricians would do?
I don't, I don't think so. What, to get the internet? No.
Unfortunately. If I, if I understand correctly from Monday's caucus meeting, this was a reimbursement.
Oh, yeah, he'll expect it. It's a one-time, it's a one-time charge. It's a reimbursement.
My concern with it, it's two hundred and two dollars. I, you know, it sounds petty, but if we're going to do things like this, one, we all need to be in the movement. Two, I don't understand, if someone's trying to sell us something, my experience with that is they confront the cost or do it somewhere where they already have, like, you know, my concern would be, could we, the city be held liable if something is stolen, if it's out Cascade Park? I don't know what security means. I think you said cameras on Monday. Sorry to hear that. But that would be my concern with it. It just, I don't want to get in the business of paying people just to, if they want to show us something, we'll do a round of half dollar to see it.
Well, a couple of things. We did discuss this prior to council, that we were going to bring him in there to show this.
We may have talked about pasta, right?
No, well, obviously, hey, guys, listen, if you don't want to do it, don't do it, you know? But all I'm saying is that he went and did this and it was a one-time cost for him to set up this program. The program that he's going to do, if we are going to enhance the asset that we have and market the asset that we have, the program and what he's going to do will market that to a greater ability. That was the whole point of this. We discussed this. The reason he was out there was to begin that work and do that. He's going to show you a demonstration when he finishes in April. The cost for him to get the, he needed the internet up and running there. It wasn't up there at that point. The cost of that, to get it running for, he's been there for about two months, was approximately two hundred dollars. And yes, he put a couple of cameras because his equipment up there was very expensive. That's him.
I think the concern in general is that next time, I believe, we should be aware and approve any type of charges.
Yeah, as I said.
Reimbursement.
Correct. And as I said, we, whenever we talked about this a couple of months ago, and nobody had any, yeah, nobody had any doubts about what we were doing. But then, as it proceeded, we realized that they didn't have internet access there. So we had to get the internet access up and running. That's why this one-time cost.
Yeah, I do concur. We need to do better communication and let everybody know what was going on. I definitely concur with that. I was part of the meeting and you're right, that's, we need to do a better job.
Actually, we didn't know that there was going to be this charge, obviously. But once he was in there and up and running, we realized we had to do it. It was two hundred dollars. And just go do one and we'll reimburse you. I mean, we spoke to Stephanie about it and we thought it wouldn't be, you know, that big of a deal just to get this thing done. That's all.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a reimbursement. It is what it is. But, you know, like, obviously, I think just here on, an email sent around to all of us that we're getting ready to approve this or we're asked to approve this, let everybody chime in and then we move forward.
Well, I gotta say this, from my understanding, and believe me, guys, this is way out of my expertise. My understanding, when he does this demonstration, I think people are going to be impressed by what he's done.
No, it's, he got it, but when we were done with the meeting, all we had, because he said the price in there. All we had to do was let you guys know that that's on us.
Okay, we had a motion that's called.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
No.
Mr. Cameron?
No.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Okay, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five four, authorizing administration to expend four thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and two cents to upgrade point of sale system at the Silwan Heights Golf Course. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, second. Second by Mr. Rogers. Questions?
This, with, there are stocks of doing upgrades out there. How does this all fit in? I mean, we just got this new system. We paid a couple grand for, what, a couple of years ago? What's the purpose of the upgrade? Like, what does it do differently than the current one doesn't do?
I could be cheesy. I don't have that information on me at this point, unfortunately.
Sorry, I didn't catch this on Monday, but that would be my concern is if we're gonna, I mean, there are stocks of upgrading upstairs. I don't know how this fits in upstairs or what it, like, what the purpose, you know what I mean? I thought. What's this system do that the one now doesn't do?
Yeah, I think, speaking with Hans, and I think what this does is it keeps better records of tracking offers and it's more using the credit cards and the debit, from my understanding. You know, I wish I'd known, we could have brought Hans in, he could have explained this all better.
Can we table this to get more info during your minute?
Sure. I'd recommend table it as well. I don't have the information on what this PO is different than ours.
I made a motion to table it.
To our services.
Second table. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Motion to table by Mr. Rosanna. We have a second. I'll second. Second by Mr. Cameron. Okay, call a vote?
Sorry, and then, yeah, can we get Hans in here on our next caucus meeting to, I'm just doing a presentation.
Yeah, sure. Okay, call a roll to table, Resolution dash oh five four.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Authorizing, Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five five, authorize administration to expend one hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars to pay the invoice for materials for the Enterprise Park project. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter? Second by Mr. Cameron. Questions? Chris?
Any questions? I've kind of spoken about it up there. The one hundred ninety-three thousand is the total cost minus seventy-seven thousand that'll come from the grant. And then the remainder will come, one hundred sixteen thousand will come from Lipa Fuels.
This finishes phase one?
This finishes, this finishes the lighting in phase one. Complete finish will be through U Street in the twenty twenty four pavement.
Question?
This is just from the material. Where's the, or the labor money come from?
We already doubled the change order.
Okay, okay.
Okay, call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
No.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. I need a motion to approve or deny Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five six, conditional use request of the Gussie M. Walker Community Outreach to Host their after-school and summer program for the underprivileged youth. This property is located generally in the area of two oh five East Frontal Street and eleven forty-one South Mill Street in the C one General Business District of the Fifth Ward.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. And after the vote, I'm going to pass this paper for you to assign. You'll do this by approve or deny. Call a vote?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Oh, approve.
Mr. Rosanna?
Approve.
Mr. Ritter?
Approve.
Mr. Cameron?
Approve.
Mr. Bevlar?
Approve.
Mariliska?
Approve. The paper I'm going to pass along to you guys are, there are two sheets. Okay, moving on. And we save the best for last here. I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
This is Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five seven, authorization to hire James Eamon as a full-time police officer effective March eleventh, twenty twenty four. I need a motion to approve the hire of this young man. Motion?
Motion.
Uh, motion by Mr. Cameron, and second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bogart. Can I call the vote for this?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bevlar?
Yes.
Mariliska?
Yes. Will Mr. Officer James Eamon come up front, please? To be someone in?
Steph, turn and come on. Okay. Come around this way, please, pal. Here. Ready? Oh, wait. That's getting a lot of overhand. I state your name.
I, Jane Ziman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.